The September 9th, 2020 meeting of the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Vote call.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
Dr. Selly?
Here.
And Mr. Viera?
Here. We'll now do the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Presentations. Monmouth County Open Space, Lake Taconasy, Laura Newman, City Engineer.
Thank you, Council President. So, this is a public hearing for the submission of a Monmouth County Open Space Grant application on behalf of the city. The purpose of the Monmouth County Open Space Program is to expand park and open space opportunities for residents by providing funding to assist municipalities to develop or redevelop land to expand recreational opportunities. On the screen, what you will see is a conceptual rendering of the proposed Lake Taconasy beautification project. The improvements are focused on maintaining the area's passive recreation and include walkway improvements to ensure ADA accessibility, installation of four landscape beds, which will be planted with native species, including black tupelo, sweet bay magnolia, and beach plum, installation of five paver seating areas, and resetting of existing benches that exist. The total estimated construction cost for the project is $324,000. The city is requesting a matching grant in the amount of $162,000 through the Monmouth County Open Space Program. Again, the grant program is, at best, a 50% eligible match to project costs, and we think that this is a good project considering it enhances the recreational opportunities by the lake. And if there's any questions or comments, I'm happy to answer them.
If any member of the public has any comments to make on this public hearing, please dial star nine on your phone, and the representative will call you, call on you by the last three digits of your phone number. When you are called upon, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes, and may only speak once.
Caller whose phone number ends in 199, go ahead.
You can hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, again.
Ernest Magnoli, born at the O'Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey, and born in Long Branch. This is the public five-minute portion, yes?
No, this-
Yes, okay.
There's a hearing on the Monmouth County grant.
Oh, this is comment on the Taconasy Lake?
Yes.
So later, there's the public comment, right?
Correct.
Okay, you know, I don't want to get juiced out of my talk. So anyway, about the Taconasy Lake, I think it's important to let the public know that they should visit there. I was born in Long Branch, my sister was married in St. Michael's Church, I used to fish, actually, we used to dive in once in a while in Taconasy Lake in the 40s and 50s and et cetera, et cetera. I mean, you go to meetings and you make it sound like you've done a good job with this lake. This lake is a disgrace. It's a chemical molten algae. You got, from the projects that you developed around the area, those high-end mansions that you're building, that whole development projects, they're dumping fertilizer down the gratings into the lake. It's reaping havoc. And you have DPW, I don't know, it's like you have unqualified people. They have no idea what it's about. I mean, that lake is a disgrace. Who would want to go there and throw a fishing line in there? Not me. And God forbid you ever caught something. I mean, don't eat it. And it's a disgrace. And you make it sound like you're going to put some bushes around? The thing looks like a swamp. You got possum, rats running around, drug dealers laying around, ticks everywhere. It's a disgrace. It's not lit up. No one cleans it up. It's got garbage in it like you can't imagine. Contractors dump, dump trucks worth of stuff in there. I don't get it. And you make it sound like, oh, you know, we're going to put a little icing on it, put some nice magnolia. Sounds like my name, by the way, Magnoli, but really? Don't put any bushes, tear, cut them all down, and start cleaning up the lake the right way. Clean up under the bridges, all the stuff taped on the walls, the pollution, clean out all the flumes, and make it a real lake again. It's a disgusting, molten disgrace. Looks, smells, acts, and functions like something abandoned. And I remember all the political problems, oh, you know, if we get elected, we're going to make Taconasy like it used to be. People want to take wedding pictures there. Who would want to take a wedding picture there? Really? You don't have any effective DPW. You have people running DPW that don't know what they're doing. They're like political people. And the real people who could help, they're not politically connected, so they're not really in charge. Got like your political people in there who know nothing about nothing. And as far as I'm concerned, they probably didn't even pass the test yet. I mean, who needs that? When was that clean sweep of broom when this Long Branch team got elected? Oh, we're sweeping everything out, starting fresh. You didn't start anything fresh. Your administration is like the Taconasy Lake. They're one in the same. That's all I have to say.
Annette, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it's Annette Pananti.
Annette, there's a really bad echo. Can you turn down your speakers?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. Annette Pananti, 55, Rivergate Way, Long Branch. On behalf of the Long Branch Green Team, I applaud the current restoration plan for its native plans, but would like to add the following suggestions. There are no storm drains on El Baran Avenue. The water shoots down the road directly into the lake with no filtering or attempts to slow it down. The beautiful landscaping along El Baran Avenue indicates the use of fertilizers and herbicides. They are washed into the lake and contribute to the following degradation of the lake: growth of plants like parrot feather, like what you saw last year that cost the city $40,000 to remove; the lack of oxygen that allows only bottom feeders like carp to live in the lake. The city previously held trout fishing contests, but the lack of oxygen in the water now does not allow fish to live. The city can make an attempt to fix this by installing green infrastructure. Green infrastructure is a mandate of the new New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Stormwater Rules that must be adopted by the city by March of 2021. Last fall, Dr. Chris Obropta, the Director of the Rutgers Water Resources Extension Program, presented a seminar in the Long Branch Library about the benefits of green infrastructure. All the DPWs on the Whale Pond Brook Watershed, which includes the lake, were invited and most sent at least one attendee. They were instructed on how to construct a rain garden, among other things. The following week, Ocean Township DPW built a rain garden to stop the flooding that occurs at the corner of West Park Avenue and the community pool. That was their second rain garden. The first is located at the high school outdoor lunch area. Whale Pond Brook Watershed Association has a partnership with Dr. Obropta. His crew comes up with a drawing of the green infrastructure, and the Whale Pond Brook Watershed town does the construction and purchases the plants, which are at a minimal cost. We suggest a bio-swale, which is a big rain garden, be put at the end of El Baran Avenue. As citizen scientists, we have been gathering data for the Monmouth University Coastal Lakes Observation Network called Clonet. Clonet has data on pH levels, dissolved oxygen, turbidity of all the coastal lakes in Monmouth County. Professor Jason Adolf will elaborate on the state of the lake in a webinar on September 14th at 7:00 PM. This webinar will also go into detail on green infrastructure and how we can incorporate it into our town. I invite you all to attend. There are more than 150 participants at this time, indicating that people are very interested in this topic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will, excuse me, could you raise the volume a little bit on the voices coming in? And, Will, I'm sorry, I don't know if everybody's mic working because I don't think mine is.
Mine is.
All right, 25% increase, sir.
Can you do this?
Is there a button mayor on your-
Yeah, I tried. I'm tapping it.
With and without? Oh, there we go. Okay, thank you. I got it, Will, thanks.
Be the only callers.
I need a motion to close the public portion.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Reading and approving the previous minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes of August 26, 2020.
So move. Second.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
And Mr. Viera?
Abstain. Consideration of ordinance, public hearing, and the final consideration, there are none. Ordinance for introduction, there is none. Public participation of the resolutions and the general comments. I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. If any member of the public has any comments to make, please dial star nine on your phone, and the representative will call you by the last three digits of your last, of your phone. When you are called upon, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Caller whose phone number ends in 198, go ahead.
Um, when the Council President was speaking, there were tremendous echoes on this side here, so I'd like to know if you can, Mr. IT guy can hear me clearly? Can the IT man hear me clearly?
Everyone in the room can hear you loud and clear.
We can hear you loudly, Mr. Lapore.
Turn that main volume down. It should work on the echo.
Can the IT man hear me clearly? Mr. Will, the IT man, can you hear me clearly?
Yes, we can hear you clearly.
Loud and clear, sir.
I need to know if the IT, because you guys are echoing.
Loud and clear, sir.
Vincent Lapore, 33, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. One-minute notification from the clerk, please. Starting off Resolution 17420 for tonight, authorizing to execute a one-year lease between the City of Long Branch and 279 Broadway Associates. Per year, $127,940.72. I'm requesting a no vote on this one. City was donated a bank building upper Broadway. There's absolutely no reason why that bank building can't be utilized as a courthouse, particularly with public parking behind the courthouse in a city lot. This is ridiculous. This is another nonsensical move by the Pallone administration without being savvy to the fragility of the taxpayers. Again, a no vote. Now we get to the bad stuff, if it doesn't get worse enough. Approximately three years ago at a council meeting, I put on the public record concerns about Jason Roebuck's relationship with Finer Details, whether in his position as captain, director, provisional police chief, or police chief. Three years has passed. I recently put an Oprah in on September 2nd concerning all public records of finer details for the past eight years. Very interesting. On 12/21/15, there appears a public document sent from Finer Details to Jason Roebuck. It's a $250 gift card. None of the paperwork provided in the Oprah shows whatever happened to that gift card to Jason Roebuck, or how it was spent. The public record reveals that Finer Details is owned and operated by then Long Branch Police Department Captain Robert Weiner. Upon further review of the public record concerning Roebuck's relationship with Finer Details, one wonders, how did the city's auditors, over the years, miss this referral by one public official, Roebuck, to another city official, Weiner, about detailing city vehicles? Clearly, the invoice and the city emails speak for themselves. How did the auditors miss a $250 gift card? And I found it. What other gift cards may have been provided to Roebuck that are not on the public record? What about the city's legal departments on this matter? Where were they then and now? A few years ago, there was a threshold enacted to do business with vendors without bid under a certain dollar amount. Prior to a few years ago, where was bidding on detailing city vehicles? There are no bid publications appearing in the Oprah response, but the vehicles were serviced by Finer Details on Jason Roebuck's referrals. Clearly, a violation of Chapter 38.3(c) of the City Code. But it gets worse than that. Chapter 38.3(a) of the Code of the City of Long Branch reads as follows, quote, "No official or employee shall engage in any business or transaction, or shall have any financial or personal interest, direct or indirect, which is incompatible with the proper discharge of his duties in the public interest," end quote. Clearly, this applies to Roebuck. Apparently, the city has a selective enforcement, and Roebuck is exempt.
Ms. Wittes, you have one minute, sir.
Thank you. Again, where was the city's legal department on this then and now? I recall from July to December of 2018 how I requested this council subpoena Solomon Dweck to testify as to the corruption of public officials in this city. Counsel wouldn't do it. Counsel would not clean up the corruption in this government. I'm certain Solomon Dweck would have had a lot to say, particularly with LBPD, and even more particularly, his business arrangement with a former lieutenant who served as bodyguard for a former mayor who Dweck testified he made a payoff to. How sweet it is. Mayor Pallone and the Pallone Council, after hearing this tonight, you have proven yourselves worthless in cleaning this city's corruption up. You should be ashamed of yourselves, and the people of this city, you should be ashamed of yourselves as well for not demanding higher standards from your public officials.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Lapore.
Caller whose phone number ends in 199, go ahead.
I'm Ernest Magnoli, born at the O'Lake Drive, Asbury Park, born in Long Branch. I'd like to continue with Mr. Roebuck. As you know, the study came out that the taxpayers paid for, 40,000 or 43,000. We were able to get it, thanks to a lot of hard work by a lot of people, very problematic that the now chief, when he was a public safety director, and now the police department. And now we find out there's possibly another study, which may even criminalize some things, that's being held in abeyance by the city attorney. Is that true, Mr. Brenone?
No.
Do you have another report? Does anybody? Is there another report in addition to the one that the public has?
No.
One that George Jackson, the city business administrator, may have? Or let me ask the city businessman-
No, there's no other reports, there's only the report that's been made public.
Do you have an addendum report?
No.
No, I don't.
Okay, so that's who knows. There is no other report, other than the one that we downloaded, I think it's 52 pages. There is no other addendum report, correct?
There is not.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pallone, I guess you know the DeLisa family in Long Branch, correct?
You know, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
I said, Mayor, I guess you know the, are you all right, Mayor? I guess, you know the DeLisa family in Long Branch, Mayor? We all grew up with them, correct?
The Lucia, the Lucia family?
DeLisa.
DeLisa.
The DeLisa family.
DeLisa.
Oh, do I know the DeLisa family? Yes, I do.
Good, we all grew up together, didn't we?
Uh-
Well, I'll answer that, I'll answer that for you, we did.
Well, you don't, if you're going to ask the question, sure, I've known the DeLisa family for many, many years, yes.
Good for you. Did your, did a DeLisa ever fail the Long Branch pit-to-serve police application, and either Pallone try and help him override the results of a doctor, saying that that DeLisa, applying to be a Long Branch police officer, failed the psychological and possibly the physical? And I'm wondering, did either Pallone try and help with that? But, of course, you don't have to answer because they were unsuccessful anyway. They were unsuccessful. So now I'll ask you, Mayor, have you ever been on Peter DeLisa's jet airplane?
Have I been on, you know, can you speak up a little, Mr. Magnoli? I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. Mayor Pallone?
Yes.
Have you ever been on Peter DeLisa's jet airplane?
I have not.
Okay, I appreciate that. Are you aware that he's jockeying around, I would say, the Republican chair of Monmouth County, three holders, and the sheriff, and the prosecutor, all in an effort to try and pronounce, and I don't know why it's so political in Long Branch and Asbury and Monmouth County, but they're trying to crush anything democratic, whether it's people, council, government, mayor, whatever. And they're using this person, this Peter DeLisa, who's a problematic person, well-known in Long Branch, to fly people around, like your chief and the guy that died and we had this big party, you know, all these corrupt developers and stuff? And they're ripping the guts out of Long Branch with these tinsel out-of-control projects and these pools that you come up with in exchange for approving townhomes and condos right on the boulevard. You take a $2 million junk pool built in a swamp, right, that no one wants, that I'm saying, I don't know if anyone else is, but I think the NAACP and the ACLU should be brought in because what you're doing with that pool, in my opinion, is a form of discrimination. Because like I repeated, we all grew up in Long Branch. Chelsea Pool, Kramer Pool, we walked from the pool in a tunnel to the beach. That's how we learned to live and got along with everybody. By you putting a pool two miles inland, right, and doing what you're doing, in my opinion, and I'll stand by it, is a form of discrimination and a story. And you only have to go down, I do it a lot now, just to notice how people are using that ritzy boardwalk that you created, where most average people like me have to come to Long Branch before 9:00 in the morning or after 5:00 to enjoy the beach.
Thank you, Mr. Magnoli, for your comments, sir.
We have no other callers.
I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Resolutions, we can take the list of the resolutions as a consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Vote call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
And Mr. Viera?
Yes. Applications, none. Miscellaneous, business for the good of the order. Councilman Dangler?
Thank you, sir. This evening, I would just like to wish the students and the teachers, certainly the Board of Education, as they start a new year, but not just a new year, a new year in circumstance. And I do wish them, wish them well, and the parents to get all the help that they certainly need during these trying times. And I just hope that our students are successful and just get through this the best that they can and get the best education as they possibly can and always will here in the City of Long Branch. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman, vote.
So, good evening, everyone. I just want to remind you of one of the most important things that you have to do once every 10 years, if you have not done this yet, which is to complete the census. Because we are getting to the end of the period of time when you can do it, and so in order to make sure that everybody in Long Branch is counted, and it is so, so important that everyone is counted, just because of the funding that it gives us, because of all of the implications from it. The library, next week, starting the week of September 14th, you can go to the library, they will have tables set up outside and people helping, if you need any assistance at all, in completing the census. And they're even sweetening the deal with a few prizes and given away by the library by Monmouth Medical and the Chamber of Commerce. So, all to entice everyone to please make sure that you complete that census. You can do it at home, you can do it online, but the important thing is that you get it completed. So with that, I wish everyone a nice next two weeks until we get to talk together again. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wittes?
Good evening. I'd like to just take the opportunity to thank Stan Zouba for an amazing job that he and his staff did this during the summer months. It wasn't easy, and as time went on, things got better and better, and I know it was a lot of hard work on his part and the staff, and I just want to thank you for doing such an amazing job. And I just wish everyone a great next two weeks, and we'll be back together soon. Thank you.
Councilwoman Selly?
I have three things I'd like to talk about for a minute tonight. First of all, it's very important, the census. If you haven't already filled it out, please do so. It's very important because it depends upon the legislative districts, how many will be given to the state, and also how much money comes back to us from the federal government. The second one is, has already been discussed, it is going to be time to vote in October. Regardless of how you feel, it is a right that's given to you, and please use it, please vote. And the last one, of course, as you all see, we all have masks on. It's important that you put your mask on because it could save your life and it could save mine. Thank you.
Mayor Pallone?
Thank you, Council President. I just had two things as well, but I would like to thank every-
I just had two things as well, but I would like to thank everybody who had called in today or for tuning in. Appreciate your spending the time to be here. Many of you know that we're extending our beach season through September 30th, so lifeguards will be on duty. This will be weather permitting on weekdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM and on weekends from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. It's not on all of the beaches. I don't know the exact number, but you know, we're trying to do as best we can, but several of the beaches will be covered throughout the month of September. Badges will be required and season badges will be extended until September 30th. And please, I want to stress, only swim when a lifeguard is present. And the last thing, I just wanted to say that we'll be bringing our residents another round of safe recreation programs and events through the end of October. More information will be out shortly, but we had a very successful August with a kids and student program. And we're going to do that again with residents and with adults as well. So we'll be taking a limited number of people per program to be safe. But again, please, you know, we'll be advertising this on all our social media platforms as well as our website. So again, I'd just like to thank you again and enjoy the week.
Thank you, Mayor Pallone. And I also like to thank mostly the public. We had a busy beach season this year and abide by the rules and stay safe and everybody pretty much abide by them. So I'd like to thank them and the beach staff, that hard work they did for us and the public. With that, I want to thank all of them and good night. I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you.